I'd like to call this meeting of the White Mountain County Board of Commissioners for our work session regarding the Land Use Plan and Unified Development. And it's called the Order There.
Eric, good to see you, sir.
Likewise.
Michelle and Joe.
Okay, fair enough. I'll jump into it. There's a tremendous amount of information that I've tried to condense into a very short PowerPoint relatively. I hope that everyone's had an opportunity to review preliminary UDO and also the preliminary land use plan. Both of these documents I would consider to be in the 60 to 80% range completion. We had an opportunity to meet with the steering committee again in, I think it was September, and we went from some of the big picture ideas that you all have already heard about to kind of where the rubber meets the road. What does this mean to our UDO? How are we going to allow development or guide development and so forth? And so the UDO and the land use plan start to reflect that direction from the steering committee. A few things about the presentation. I want to talk about where we are in the planning process. Want to again just remind us of the emerging themes, some of the goals and actions that our team along with staff, along with the steering committee has come up with guiding this process. One of the main tables inside the UDO is the dimensional regulations, different zoning districts allowing certain lot sizes and so forth. I have one slide that's dedicated solely to that because I feel like it's a very important item. And then talk about a schedule. What does it look like for us to meet again as a steering committee, to go to the planning board, go to the commissioners, and kind of try to implement these documents or at least adopt them within the next three, four months? And if we did that, we would be on schedule. We originally met with the steering committee. We also had focus group meetings with the Economic Development, Citizens for Economic Development, Rockingham County leaders, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that you all have appointed, and a handful of other individual interviews. So we took what the steering committee has kind of guided us with, plus hearing from these other groups, to help guide a lot of the information. One of our first work sessions, and it was probably one of my favorite sessions of this entire process with this steering committee, is we took, pulled out the map, and we started drawing circles around areas that we felt like there could potentially be neighborhood commercial developed in these particular areas throughout the entire county over the next 20 years. And they really start to guide the entire future land use map as a whole. We also took Highway 220. We did a parcelization analysis, and you can see it on this map, some of your larger tracks that are above 50 and 100 acres along that particular corridor. We know we're running water and sewer along that corridor, so we're trying to think, all right, what does this mean for growth and development there? Then we developed a series of emerging themes that the Project Oversight Committee has kind of embraced, this idea of coordinated growth, predictable, easy to understand zoning development, economic prosperity, housing variety, different types of housing, natural resource conservation, enhanced transportation mobility. So every policy that you see in the land use plan goes back to one of these themes that you see here. I've explained to the commissioners before, just really quickly, we've got this land use transect model that we're using inside the future land use plan. It dictates the future land use map. That future land use map dictates predictable zoning development decisions. So trying to make this easy on the development side, trying to make it easier for you all as commissioners. We have 01 conserve lands. We have your rural residential agricultural lands. We have your low density growth areas. We have your controlled growth areas. We have your mixed use centers and your corridor areas. And then your downtowns and your village centers, which are mostly in your municipal areas. But that's not to say that you all don't have the opportunity in some places to actually create village centers, particularly along the 220 corridor, which brings us to the future land use map. And you can see real quickly where the steering committee had identified different nodes throughout the county where future neighborhood commercial might be appropriate. We created your kind of secondary growth residential area around each of those. But from a target growth perspective, you can see it's along the 220 corridor. I mean, that's where we're running water, sewer. And to me, we look back at this whole process in 20 years, the success of it will be predicated on what type of development and what quality of the development, and what kind of housing variety and other development happened along that corridor would pretty much dictate the success of this planning effort.
Just right there for the folks watching at home, because we had some folks that did not understand that a few days ago, and something that you said just a few minutes ago. This target area is because infrastructure is either there or in the process of being implemented in that area, right?
Yep.
And what you also mentioned is, as far as the cities, we're not over the cities. And that's where their infrastructure is located, correct?
Correct.
I just want that for the folks watching at home or who may pull it up later, because we had a question pop up about that from folks that I don't know that they understood all of that.
Yep. And what you see with the future land use map, the gray areas, those are not just the municipal areas, but also the ETJs, because county zoning does not apply to those ETJ areas, so they're grayed out for that particular reason. Any other questions regarding the future land use map? I want to talk real quickly about how the current UDO works, because we are making a couple of significant changes to how you all would do business if you adopt the UDO as our team has currently written it. Okay? So this is pretty important stuff. Number one is major subdivisions. Right now, if someone wants to come in, they don't have water, they don't have sewer, but they want to do a major subdivision, what's the process through which they get that approval? The answer is through the Rural Protected Zoning District. I take it that you all have approved a number of these while you've been in office, right? As a rural protected district? Okay. So as the UDO is currently written, that would no longer be the process through which you would get a subdivision approved. Okay? If you don't have water and sewer, and you want to do a major subdivision, you would be able to do it by right underneath the RA zoning district. This is a significant change. It takes out a lot of the bureaucracy. Now, you all might say, you know, we want to see those items and so forth. I would say what you all have here in the UDO is very unusual. And the reason being is, if you want to build a road to state standards, and you want to build homes to the North Carolina Building Code, now this is a big qualifier, if you want to build homes to North Carolina Building Code, it's very unusual to not be able to do that by right. Okay? You all are requiring people to go through the Rural Protected District. And Carrie and I pulled up some old reasons that this occurred, and we could tell from what's allowed in different zoning districts, why, but it was confirmed when we looked up kind of the historical record. It was done in order to prevent manufactured home major subdivisions. Okay? So what we propose in the UDO is to remove manufactured homes out of the residential agriculture and create a separate zoning district. If you want to come in here and do a major subdivision that's manufactured homes, we've created a new district for you to be able to do that. So as opposed to allowing, forcing people who are just building to North Carolina Building Code to go and rezone in order to avoid them, stop them from building manufactured homes, we just say, no, you can do that, but if you want to do manufactured homes, then you would kick into a rezoning. Does this make sense to you all?
Got a question.
Yes.
With this new zoning, are you differentiating manufactured homes? We have mobile homes versus modular homes, so you've kind of got a wide variety of manufactured homes.
So modular is actually built to the North Carolina Building Code, so those would not, you don't regulate those any different than you do a stick-built house. The only difference is, is they're built kind of in a factory, and then they're kind of put together. But a HUD standard home, a manufactured home, North Carolina state law does allow you to regulate those. And you all do now. We're just changing the way you're kind of doing business. Any questions about this? And steering committee, does this make sense to you all too from, you can throw me on the bus too. You know, is this reasonable? So.
Matt, we differentiate enough in the definition to distinguish between the two.
That's just the law that allows us to do it right now.
Okay. So say someone wants to come into the county and build a manufactured home park or a major manufactured home subdivision right now.
And at this point, you're defining manufactured home as?
HUD standard.
Well, mobile home, right?
Yeah.
It's called a double Y. It's called a double Y for discussion.
So how do you do that if you want to do a major subdivision? You come to you guys and you rezone again. So we're not changing that. You're still going to have to come in and rezone, just we're changing that. Right now, you currently rezone underneath the residential mixed zoning district.
Eric, for clarification, what is a major subdivision?
I think you guys found it's more than three lots?
Right now, it's more than five.
More than five, okay. More than five lots.
Thank you.
Yep.
What do other people do?
I mean, we're saying we define it as more than five. What's out there for others?
Usually it's three to five. Okay. Three to five lots.
I would say it's fucking three in this area of municipality and five in more rural counties.
Well, I'd rather it be higher.
Higher.
So let me qualify this and say, under the RA zoning district, if you're doing a major subdivision, and you're building to North Carolina Building Code, standard homes, you can do it by right. Okay? You would no longer come, you'd go to the technical review board, make sure that you're building roads to state standard, make sure that you meet the density average that we're going to go over in a second, and you can do business. If you want to do a minor subdivision, you can still place manufactured homes in the RA zoning district. But as soon as you kick over the five lots, you can no longer do that. And that's in accordance with your current code now, correct? Yeah. Okay. So I did want to qualify that.
But we, the zoning is still differentiating that RP, if properties are zoned, RP has to, especially, you're like a double Y there. So it's, it's, it's a bit, it's a bit convoluted, actually.
Here's if anybody wants to add in this, it's years ago I was involved in this, looking at this very issue, is there a time criteria involved? And I'll point out an example of somebody in Western Park County that did three mobile home lots, waited about a year for others doing, waited about X amount of time. Is this involved, is there a time criteria associated with major, minor development situation?
There should not be. So once you subdivide out of that main track, and I don't know if you guys have anything on the books here that's?
No, we probably, and it's something we're still talking about, I think we should establish the basis of a parent tract at some point, and that parent can get divided up so many times and with so many years apart. Right now, it's a new year.
This is happening with a lot of grandpop homes.
Right. Right now, you only have to wait a year to further subdivide.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Yeah.
What's Emily's, should I can read?
Every year counts for that number five, and once you kick it over five in a three-year period, then it would count for it.
Well, once you're up to five in any, that sixth lot kicks you into major subdivision. It's just a different way of saying that.
Well, the question is over what period of time, and I think Emily just answered this.
Three years overall.
But everybody else, that's what I'm talking about, is somebody going to creep up on sneak up into a major situation without making the criteria be laid out.
Yeah, I would suggest that you have a parent tract, and coming back to like the family subdivision, which is sometimes something that we're asked to write into ordinances, but you're meeting kind of the same criteria through the minor subdivision. So you're allowing someone to do a basic driveway to be able to subdivide a certain amount of lots off of that. You can come in and subdivide and do manufactured homes if you desire to do that. But once you kick to a certain number of lots, then you can still do that, provided you get rezoned to do that, and everyone around you is aware of that. So it's meant to allow a certain level of subdivision to occur, to accommodate family and other situations, but at some point, you become a developer, and that's when kind of the regulatory aspect's meant to come into play. But I think this is a great item for us to take to the committee in terms of the parent tract, in terms of time, and really explore that issue, because I hadn't got into that element here. Okay. Again, manufactured home parks, if you want to rezone rural mixed, is how you would do that now. And this is currently, I think you all have a number of manufactured home subdivisions that have gone through this particular rezoning. The thing about your residential mixed zoning district is it allows a lot of other types of residential development other than just manufactured homes. To me, this isn't a strong policy. If you're going to, if you want to do a major subdivision or manufactured home park, we're going to call, we should call it a manufactured home park or a manufactured home subdivision. Because if you're a neighbor and you're like, oh, someone's, you know, doing a major subdivision, it's a residential mixed, well, if you go and look that up, there's a lot of different things you could do. It's just not very clear. So I would just steer us away from this, and we've got some other ideas for how you use the residential mixed zoning district, and I'll go over that shortly. Rural commercial, your zoning district, conditional zoning district process, in the UDO, we create some very basic architectural guidelines, very simple. There's like three or four in there, and we can go over those tonight if you'd like. But otherwise, I think you're still going to see the conditional zoning district come into play in those particular areas. And I know in the beginning of this process, it seems like there were, I heard from both sides, like, can we do less conditional zoning districts? And then some are like, no, we want the ability to really see what's happening there. So I think this is going to be between you all from a policy decision-making process and also from guidance from your planner on that fact, but I just wanted to bring that So really to simply lay out what the zoning ordinance changes are, again, we're trying to create as much predictability as possible. Number two here, the residential agriculture, which is pretty much the base zoning district in the county, would allow major subdivisions by right, provided they meet NC Building Code, so it's an exclusion manufactured home. We would create a new mixed-use zoning district that doesn't exist at all. This is meant for where there's water, there's sewer. You would allow for both residential and commercial all in that zoning district. And if you look at the future land use map and you see where we've identified the mixed use development, those would be some of the areas appropriate for that particular zoning district. Okay? So this is a new mixed-use zone.
Does it have a size criteria to begin on maximum size?
In terms of acreage? There isn't. And honestly, we, I've not even written out all the details of that zoning district. We might say like, all right, you got to be at least five acres or something like that.
Well, I was just thinking, if you put a commercial establishment, this is instead of the public, you wouldn't do it with one house.
Right. Right. Yeah, absolutely. This is something that where I think you would see the conditional district come into play. Someone would come in and say, Carrie, we want to rezone under mixed-use conditional district. We are going to submit a site plan where we meet that underlying base criteria, but we want to disclose to the commissioners and the public exactly what we're doing, and that would be the avenue that you all would go. And that'd be pretty appropriate. But they need to have water and sewer in order to even apply for that particular zoning district. Okay? It's one of the key factors there. Your rural protected, we would leave.
We're limited in the areas that we have sewer, so this is, at this point in time, really just a small part of the county that this would apply to. But do we need a separate district for this?
Well, you're hitting one of the debates Carrie and I continue to have, because we're going to keep the planned unit development option inside the zoning ordinance. That particular option would allow, from a policy perspective, you to rezone anywhere in the county. So say you want to do some Airbnb apartments along with a general store and a campground. Well, you would go with a planned unit development, and you would be able to do that mix of uses, and you'll come in here and get approved and so forth. So you could take that same planned unit development model and just apply it there in the mixed-use zoning district and not create the new zoning district. So I think what I'm saying there might, it might be the simpler way. But I know one of our original objectives was, can we create a mixed-use zoning district where you could come in as a landowner or developer and actually get rezoned as, under a general district? And then there would be no conditional district zoning. So if you can, if you can create a tight zoning ordinance where you all would feel comfortable given as general use rezoning, you've now like really unlocked the development community to make something happen and make it happen quickly and predictably. And I'm talking, I won't say these are super complex things, but if I need to slow down, let me know. So we could just go with the planned unit development and say, it doesn't matter if you have water or sewer. If you're out in the county and you've got a unique idea that involves a variety of uses, go planning and development. If you're right on 220, you've got water, sewer, you want to do apartments, townhomes, some single-family, and, you know, some commercial aspects, planning and development would work for that as well.
It's the same tool, it just wouldn't allow a higher lot yield with water than sewer. It gives that flexibility.
Would you have to have both? Could you be just water only?
Other way, you come in for a planned unit development and you decide that this is the number of lots you can get with just water, this is the number of lots you can get with just with water and sewer. It's the same process of mix of uses. That's really the only difference from a regular subdivision.
Yeah. I've seen a lot of planning developments without water or sewer. You know, hey, we want a campground, and we want some single-family homes, and we want a general store, you know? But it's, you know, so it's possible.
And what Eric was talking about, it's zoning by right without any conditions would be, is the opposite of that. What this does is allow you to have some control by knowing what the site's going to look like at a time. When you develop it, when there's a mix. It only comes into play when it's anything other than just single-family homes.
Let me ask a question. Will this, from a developer's standpoint or the property owner's standpoint, would this make it easier for them to determine whether this could happen or not by doing this? In other words, are we making things clearer for the developer or for the property owner as to what would be acceptable or what wouldn't?
Yeah, definitely. So you're telling the property owner that whatever their soils will yield, whatever utilities they feel like they can get, whatever streams happen to be on their property floodplains or anything else, they can design as many lots as will fit.
Yeah. So this, okay.
So this is more objective instead of subjective. Currently, what we have is maybe more subjective, and this will be more objective, so it would be clear for somebody upfront.
Well, you can still convince and just do one acre lots, which is a very simple, and that's what we do now. But you can also design a mix and something smaller.
Like I said, I just want the property owners to know upfront, you know, to have a little more guidance from us what's acceptable. That's one of my goals.
And so this is where the nexus between the land use plan, which is a policy document, and the UDO, which is kind of your law, the land, meet. And that's why I keep emphasizing this future land use map that we keep going over, because this is your policy. This is where you're saying, these are our target growth areas. And remember, we walk through each of these, what we're expecting in the mixed use, what we're expecting in controlled growth. So it's not like down to the parcel level, because we can't plan at that level, and you all want the flexibility as leaders to consider things and allow the community and development community to consider things. So we're not trying to be rigid here, but at the same time, we're trying to provide the overarching policy guidance, and the developer to come in and say, you know what? You didn't identify this intersection as neighborhood commercial node, but let me tell you why. It's like the other ones. Because in your land use plan, you say this, 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 and this, which we've done, is what makes that rational. And so it does provide them with guidance, but it's through the policy as opposed to the UDO, which is your mechanism for kind of controlling it.
Right. Okay.
It is kind of a, it's policy-driven, which means that a property owner comes in with an ask first, rather than you saying, this is what you can do everywhere. So there is some more, a little bit more subjective to it, but that's the way, that's a better way to control growth area by area. Larry, does that address your concern?
Well, again, I just want the property owner or the developer to have more guidance upfront that's clear and objective, that they could, they think this will go or they don't think it will go. That's, I know there's still some subjectivity to it. I realize that, and it always will be. I just want to provide more clear understanding when people come in or if they're looking to develop their property.
We don't have density, density caps.
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing Charlie say is, I mean, we oftentimes hear different arguments that really are not relevant for what we're supposed to be hearing, and it derails kind of the whole presentation. And before our planning board, sometimes it completely derails the decisions that come out of there. And I think that's probably what Charlie's talking about, making sure everybody knows what to expect when they come in.
The map will?
Yeah. That was our, that was our meeting topic on this was, nothing to anybody on the planning board or this board, but Bruce got tired, Gene got tired, I got tired, but every time he was going to do something, he knew he was going to end up in front of y'all. We're trying to reduce those numbers down as much as we possibly can to even take it out of Carrie's hands that, okay, if you can do X, Y, and Z, you're done. And technical review committee on some occasions may do that. We're trying to take it as much off of y'all and the planning boards and make subjective decisions as possible. Now, some of this new stuff, like we're talking about with mixed use, that's down the road, and some policy is there, but the logistics of it would have to be created later on. But we're trying to build this for a long time.
Well, you both hit exactly what I'm looking for. Number one, I want the developer to understand if I do A, B, and C, it's going to be okay.
That's not there right there.
Exactly. I know. I understand.
Yeah, that's a big part of the process review.
Right. So that's the first thing. And then the second thing is for the public to know, okay, you know, I'm looking to buy a piece of property. I want it to be my home place to leave to my kids. Look at the property around, see what it's owned, and then you kind of have an idea that this will probably stay a certain way. Whereas we've had people come in, they buy property, it should be clearly development-type property or commercial-type property, and then they get mad when it gets rezoned commercial property. So I just want to be sure the public, as Kevin pointed out, is aware, or they should be aware, if they look around.
That's what we're trying to do now. We're getting into the weeds about, is it being done that way?
Right. That's what we want to move towards, in my opinion.
Be very, very clear process outlined, that's what we're doing. A lot of our system.
Right. Yeah, if you're a realtor in Rockingham County, you should be very familiar with the future land use map that's going to be adopted as part of the land use plan. This is crucial. So item three, we discussed this idea of a new mixed-use zone or possibly just going with the planned unit development. I'm going to add that as another agenda item with the steering committee. Rural protected, this is how you all are currently allowing for major subdivisions under the rural protected zone. Go to planning board, then go to you all. That will now become an obsolete zoning district. We're going to leave it in the UDO, because there's now a whole bunch of major subdivisions out there that are zoned rural protected. But this, no one would ever go and use this zone anymore, because if you're RA, you can do the same things that you could do underneath rural protected. Okay? So this would now become an obsolete zoning district. Residential mixed, as I mentioned in the last slide, this is the zoning district that would come to you all if you wanted to do a manufactured a manufactured home major subdivision. Residential mixed, we are proposing that would no longer allow manufactured home parks or manufactured homes as individual lots. But this district would be ideal for areas that have water and sewer where commercial isn't appropriate. Okay? You've got water, you've got sewer, but commercial development, which I mentioned the mixed use zoning district might be appropriate. This would not, commercial might not be appropriate there. But would allow for a variety of housing types. Okay? So this would require a new level of zoning. So if you have water, or you don't have water or sewer, you can stay underneath the RA and so forth. My recommendation is before you all allow anyone to have sewer for residential development, they have to rezone to mixed residential. The guidelines, the densities that are allowed here are much better, much greater than what they'd be allowed for in the areas with no water and sewer, which obviously makes sense. So this does a couple of things for you all. One, it provides that opportunity for the developer to say, all right, can I get sewer? Well, if you get rezoned and you all enter into that agreement, then this would be the opportunity to do that. But then, secondly, it creates a whole lot more opportunity for the developer to create townhomes, small lots, big lots. They could do even like little small quadplexes, things along those lines and be as creative as they would like to be in that particular zoning district. They have water and sewer. You all want to get the best bang out of your buck and get as much density in some of these areas. But you also want high quality development and allow the developers some flexibility there. So this, this is how we're steering you all in that particular direction. Does that make sense? This would become the new residential mixed zoning district. This is very different than how you all use residential mixed right now, which is the mechanism for manufactured home parks. Which brings me to item six. There would actually be a manufactured home district, zoning district. So it's very clear to neighbors and others. It's not residential mixed. It's this is what we want to do there. So that would be the only district in which you could either do a manufactured home park or you could do a major subdivision. It would require rezoning, which is how it is now.
Let's back up just a moment.
Yes, sir.
Item four, rural protected. You said, if I understood you correctly, you said that would basically become a legacy zoning and there would be no more applications accepted for that. But the ones that were currently zoned RP, they would continue in that form. Is that right?
That's correct. That's correct.
So if I had had a rezoning RP, but hadn't built it out, I would still be able to do that?
Yeah. Nothing would change.
Okay.
The zoning district would stay there the same. The reason why it would come obsolete is because you can do everything in that zoning district that you can do in the RA, which is what the base zone is throughout the entire county, if that makes sense. So what, there's no reason to come and rezone when you can do by right what you could do in that zone.
Right. Okay.
It will need to become clear what happens to the conditions of that RP. Because the conditions are a part of the district itself. So really simple language. It says everything that was RP, stays RP, and follows the conditions that had at the time.
Yeah, I'm literally not even changing it. I mean, it's just in there.
You're right.
Yeah.
We just don't use it anymore.
Yeah, we just, yeah, it's literally just obsolete. It's just no one would want to use it.
One question. We're doing away with RP and we, when we get a developer that creates a, a subdivision with a major subdivision in RA now, and there's, but there's nothing to prevent that same, another developer to come and create a non-major subdivision, a smaller, to fall under the minimum category of manufactured homes adjacent to it.
That's right. And that's just how it is right now. You, if you've got an RA tract that's adjacent to an RP tract, you could do a minor subdivision right there next door. And that's, yeah, you live in the county. It's normally how, how as a consultant I answer that. If I, if I was on staff, I wouldn't answer it that way.
Did anything, if they're like concerned with that, if you're going to know, what's at the basis of that concern? Is it knowing what to expect from the property next door? Is it?
See, you might be making an argument there to make the minor, major subdivision be no more than three instead of five underneath that.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Fair enough. Steering committee put that on your agenda too.
Maybe four.
Do a four?
Actually, I want ten.
If nothing else, would you agree that it's misleading when you say major subdivision and it's three houses? It is to me. It's okay?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, fair enough.
Okay. You don't have to answer it.
Yeah, yeah. Comment from the committee?
We'll think about it.
One of the issues I think we had was residential protected over the years. We, when we rezone a subdivision, like Winston Forest, for example, the residential protected is Winston Forest. It's not the area adjacent to it. It was, so we, we created a problem with not controlling adjacent to our subdivisions that we had. And that, that's been one of the issues. I think we have a tendency to think about residential protected, protected county, but it's really protected, the subdivision per se.
Yeah.
Not what's adjacent to it.
And there is, the concern is a whole, like a manufactured home subdivision next to a current, is it a RP district, for instance? There, we can have a different, different standards for our manufactured home subdivision. Reduce that to three versus other, versus single family homes.
Well, in reality, if you build a subdivision with large $300,000 homes, the neighboring tract, if it's big enough to subdivide, the value is going to go up if the first subdivision is, is built out. And the odds of creating a major subdivision of mobile homes on that lot as opposed to a major subdivision of $200,000 homes is pretty slim. Or $300,000 or $400,000. Just because the value of the dirt is much different and would outpace the single wide subdivision.
And it still will be a lot size. We're talking about acre lots, for instance, would still be the requirement next to that, that established subdivision is probably the smaller lots by now. But that next door with minor subdivision of the three and the five is going to be limited to a lot size.
And if we're okay with that, we'll, we'll talk about the lot sizes a little bit. Fair enough. I'm not sure if you all have had a chance to look through the draft land use plan document. We've got it published on our digital publication page. Inside there, you're going to see all the land use planning goals, economic development goals. We have some tourism, recreation related goals. And we address a few other pretty significant issues, to say the least. But moving over to the UDO more explicitly, we have this proposed dimensional requirement table. Okay? So the column there, you see RA, the residential protected, residential mixed. And then we get into neighborhood, commercial, office, institutional, highway, you know, near other districts that exist right now. Just what we wanted to focus on the RA for, for a second. We are looking to, I don't know if fundamental is the right word, but I'll use it. We're fundamentally going to change the way you calculate and understand how much development can happen on a lot. What I've encouraged the steering committee and staff to do, and I think everyone's on board so far, is to no longer have a minimum lot size. Okay? Instead, we would go with a density average. So what that means is you could have some smaller lots over here or some bigger lots over there. Or if you've got an area that has a bunch of wetlands or some steep slopes or some buffers, things along those lines, you can leave those areas and kind of consolidate your lots to some certain areas. Or say you've got poor soils and really good soils. Some really wet soils and you've got some really great soils that perk really well. Well, you can kind of push your development over there. And so maybe you don't have exactly an acre lot. Maybe, maybe you're down to like a three quarter acre lot. Or say you want to go down to even a half, some half acre lots and push all your septic system into some open space. You can do that in the residential agriculture zoning district. All right? So what we can do is we can reduce road infrastructure. We can environmentally make it better. But if you want to just create larger lots, you can still do that as well. So we're trying to create as much flexibility for the development community as possible to either one, reduce the development cost or just mitigate for different environmental conditions that might be on the property. Okay? So when we say density average, this is not a one acre lot size. This is, if you've got, if you've got 100 acres, you can put 100 homes on it. It's a one acre density average. In terms of those lot sizes and how that's configured is up to you from a creative standpoint, the market conditions, and your particular tract. All right?
Uniform setbacks.
Pardon?
Looks like uniform setbacks. Is that?
Yes. I, I think that your lot width is way too restrictive. I felt like your setbacks were too restrictive. Like I eased up a lot of these. And I think the committee and staff certainly recognize that. Now, if you're along a collector or a thoroughfare, some of those maybe weren't as restrictive as they should be, or at least left them as restrictive as that.
Question for you, Eric. And this may be a personal thing. So if it is, you throw my opinion out the door. But I personally would like to see something that would encourage cluster units versus anything approaching this. You know, the idea being that we, we have more green area, larger green areas. Now, is that part of your motivation or is there an incentive built in that I don't see?
There's no incentive built in. A lot of planners in, in my profession will create a whole other separate cluster zoning, they'll call it, or they'll call it conservation subdivision. But all it is, is density averaging. And so what I think we do is we, we allow everyone to play on that, on that field. Now, if you wanted to create an incentive, you could say, all right, we're going to make you all do one and a half acre lot sizes. Or you could do a density average and provide us with 25% open space. So those are, those are the.
Well, you understand exactly what I'm talking about.
Exactly, yeah.
Because you can do this averaging thing. And obviously, certain chunks of land are acceptable for three eighths acre land, you know, considering perk and everything. And sometimes two or three acre plots are not suitable. So in authoring this thing, we want to take, I would like to see that taken into account.
So is, is what I'm presenting, do you think that meets an objective?
No, I think, I think it's close to the bill, but it doesn't specifically encourage cluster units.
Okay. Well, if you want to encourage it, then there has to be an alternative that's not as appealing.
I would just suggest that you and the committee discuss it and see if that's something they want to do. If they don't, that's fine too.
Yeah. I, I'd be curious to hear from the committee. If you, if you all think we go with a density average, do you think that you're going to have some clustering there? Cause it's going to, it saves developers a ton on road cost for one.
I think, I think it's market driven, Commissioner. I think you may have a developer, you may have two different developers, one looking east and one looking west. And we have this density average. Developer A may say, yeah, I want to do exactly what you have. I want to have clusters. You may have none. I'm building a different type of development for a different type of clientele. And we may end up, in a perfect world, we would end up with two completely different looking subdivisions, but that would attract two different crowds.
Exactly. Some people would like to give up that land and have more common space.
Sure.
And others would rather have it in their yard.
Developer to say that and we're giving them, I don't want to say free range is a bad choice of words, but we're giving them the structure to do that if they so choose within certain criteria. So I think it's market driven. I think it's market driven.
Let me say this. I think what we're proposed here gets you further to what you propose than where you are right now. Right? I mean, that's for sure.
Oh, yeah.
Right? I mean, we're, we're getting you further there.
Agreed.
You agree with that?
Yeah, there's an obvious, I'm never.
My, my only concern, and it's, it's not really a concern. I'm thinking not tomorrow, but you know, 10 years from tomorrow, is that when we go to a, get away from, we go to a density average away from lot size, one of the things that we have to consider is that we have a limited amount of capacity on our infrastructure. And you know, that's going to take, that's going to impact our long range planning when we start talking about cluster and, and density driven subdivisions. Cause we do have a, we do have some, some work to do, especially in the sewer.
Are you talking about other services?
Yes, ma'am.
As well as spreading the density, rather than spreading the density around.
Yeah.
So let's take the RA right now. If, if you don't have public water or sewer, we're saying you can do a one acre density average. Got 100, 100 acres, you can do 100 homes. Okay? Configure them how you see fit. Cluster, don't cluster. If you have public water, we propose.
Why did you choose one acre average?
Well, the next lot I'm going to show you is to show you your most recent subdivisions and where they are at with this. But right now, you have a one acre minimum lot size. I know right now, by the time you count for roads, other open space, buffers and so forth, you're, you're, it's going to be very difficult to get, you know, you're going to, it's going to be difficult to get a one to one density average. So I felt like by doing the one density average, this is giving the, this is giving the developer and the land the benefit of the doubt that it could, it could have that carrying capacity. It would kind of be the max. So I think that's.
Overall density, which is like what we have now. We were talking about density versus lot size. It, this is what Eric was saying, resulting overall density.
Yeah.
It's not different than what we have.
Yeah. So the RA, what we propose is with public water, with just public water, it'd be 1.25. So 100 hall, 100 acres, you could do 125 homes. Configure them how you see fit. You notice with public water and sewer, it's asterisk because you would then be kicked into a rezoning that would go into a different zoning district. You then you go into the pod, into a mixed use and so forth. Okay? Now, let's look at some of your active subdivisions from 2004 and 2020. Colley Brook Farm, Providence Glen, Colley Brook, Knightdale Farm Phase One, and so forth. So you've got a range of acreage here, I mean, as low as eight acres all the way up to 135 acres. Your lot range goes from eight up to 169 lots. Your average lot size ranges from about point eight to, to 1.12. But look at your density average. Only Winsome Forest at 135 acres with lots, 169 lots hits the 1.25 density average here. So you've got 169 lots on 135 acres. What we're trying to do is, is get more creativity, the potential to cluster, the potential to do a little bit smaller lot sizes, take advantage of the best parts of the property and so forth.
You're saying for us to go to 1.25 in which instances?
When you have water.
Just water?
Yeah.
Okay.
You could go up to 1.25.
And water and sewer was to what?
Well, you would rezone.
Okay.
And that's a scenario in which we're still working out what that's going to look like. But that's where we want to see some higher densities. We want to see you guys at three, four, five, six acre density averages. Just to get the ROI you're going to need.
How would you deal with townhomes or something like that in that particular case? You understand what I'm saying?
So the residential mixed zoning district is going to allow townhomes, for example. You'd have to have water and sewer in order to do that. Or if you wanted to do townhomes in the county, for example, you could just rezone to a pod or a planned unit development, something along those lines, and just combine your septic systems for those if you wanted to. But you'd have to come in here and show that those are probably near one of your, those R1 or those secondary growth areas on the future land use map. Somewhere along those lines where that would be appropriate. But what specifically are you referring to? From an infrastructure standpoint, from a location standpoint?
Developments. I know some people that are looking developments that are going to include upmarket condos. And obviously, you can put a lot more of those in a given space than you can standalone, single-family units. And that might run much denser than 1.25. Because it's not base, you're getting more on one lot if you follow. So if you do the average, you're going to come up with a bigger number than 1.25.
Yeah, sure. And now, in that scenario, are you suggesting there is sewer or is not sewer?
There would have to be sewer, in my opinion.
Yeah. So this is, what we're proposing for the 1.25 is if you only had water, not sewer. So if you've got water and sewer, we want to see a high-density average. Again, so I would say this is a place where that...
You don't have that number yet. Is that right?
No, and honestly, I think that, I think that it should be somewhat flexible. And you're going to see developers come in with, again, either a mixed-use conditional district or a residential mixed conditional district. They're going to be asking you to offer sewer connectivity, and they're going to be asking you to approve a certain development. So if we got to regulate it, I would say we make it a high-density average potential. But you all in that conditional district rezoning are going to get to dictate whether they can max that out or not based on what it's around. If you're nestled up on 220, you might say, go for it. Let's go max it out. But if you're nestled in between the 220 corridor and kind of that transition zone out to the RA, you know, maybe that's not appropriate. So it's going to be a little bit location-specific.
I got you. But early on, we said the idea is to reduce the amount of traffic coming into this board. And that seems like that would...
I'm going to reduce it from rural protected, I'm going to reduce you from the RA. But yes, you're going to see, particularly along the 220 corridor, where you've got water and sewer, they are going to be coming to this board with site-specific plans. This is my recommendation, requesting sewer and showing you what they're going to build.
I'm primarily concerned about what Mr. Hall brought up regards giving rules and numbers that developers can look at and make decisions early on.
But if I may, I think we're offering that opportunity. But when you start getting into a mixture of townhomes, can the infrastructure handle it? Is what the board's going to have to look at. Planning's going to have to look at. And ultimately, that plan, you're talking about a major subdivision there, with mixed use there, I think it's got to come in front of the board, Commissioner. I don't think we can set any rules by that.
Well, some of it, whatever, no matter how good a job you do, some of it's going to end up... We're going to have to have individual cases. But Carrie and her bunch down there need to give the potential developer an idea of how close they are.
Correct, correct. And I think that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
And the dimensional table does that. You see that in the water and sewer residential mix, we go up to six.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you could allow townhomes by right, but because of the nature that they're developed in a primarily single-family residential that you have in county, I think it would be good to see those cases.
Well, just out of curiosity, did you look at what the municipalities do on their apartment complexes?
I've not looked at the municipalities here.
That's the only parallel I can think of in the county is what the municipalities are doing with apartment.
Yeah, and it's usually a very wide range. But to see a 6,000-square-foot lot density average is, you know, an R6 or an R4 even, is very common. So this is where I'll yield to the development community, we feel like a six-acre... And we're actually in the process of taking several tracks here in the county. And if you've looked at the land use plan, we started to lay those out. We're seeing how the stuff plays out in very specific areas, very specific tracks, and so forth, here in the county. And I think that we'll have some of those final concepts to present to the steering committee and make sure that everyone's comfortable. But if we know that, if you need sewer and you're going to have to come to this board in order to get approval for sewer, you might as well come with a plan. And I feel like the UDO, I think that we need to keep the density averages pretty high, and then allow the commissioners and planning board and others to kind of condense those down. But I'm open for suggestions there.
It's going to help prevent some of what's been happening, fairly likely, with the ask of, I want water and sewer, and then question back to the developer, well, what is the lot yielding to me? Is it worth us extending those services to?
Well, make them, I'm not looking for an absolute answer right here. I'm very comfortable with Matt and the rest of the gang looking at it, as long as they're aware.
Yeah. I'll highlight, we do have an online interactive map right now that has the county, has the different nodes that the committee has identified throughout the county. We've got the water, sewer, infrastructure that's being proposed. And it's interactive. You can go on there and identify different ideas, insights, barriers that you see in the county. So I did want to just make that note. If you all have time, or anyone on staff has time, steering committee, we did create this custom interactive map to obtain any other comments or ideas that you all might have. So I did want to provide that link. With that, I wanted to talk a little bit about the schedule. And this, I think, is the last slide. Land use plan adoption. We can do this one of two ways. Either we take the land use plan, get it adopted, or go to planning board, and then come to the commissioners for adoption. And then we bring the UDO behind that, or we can bring both of these to you all, all at the same time. And it's kind of up to you all. Originally, I was thinking we were going to do both at the same time. The more I thought about it, I'm like, all right, how about we go to the planning board here for some period of time? Make sure that they're at least, because they're going to have to communicate and understand these policies as they make recommendations to you all. So it's important that they are apprised of those items. So is it something that we want to take to them at some point? Or do we just take both the land use plan and the UDO to them altogether? And how do we want to go about that? I know that with the steering committee, we definitely have, I know at least one, probably two more meetings we'd like to do with you all to hammer out a few of these last items. So we're looking at October, maybe November as well. So, you know, do we do it?
When's appointments for the planning board? When those new members are appointed, or we got any seats coming open?
We have appointments coming up that you're going to be getting, actually. Inspired appointments for, that we need, up for reappointment.
So when do they take effect? When would they be sworn in and be seen?
Immediately upon appointment. As part of your, when you do your consent agenda and approve it. And we swear them in to the next planning board.
So the second, the first meeting in November, though?
Well, I actually plan to bring you some the next, this month, later this month.
But they wouldn't be sworn in until November. When would they meet?
They would meet, correct. They would meet again. Well, no, actually, they're going to meet on the 26th of this month. We have the second meeting.
I'm just saying.
This one, so they'll be...
That's a steep learning curve if you're just, if you're a new appointee on the planning board. You're going to have some homework before you come to...
Are these all reappointments?
Yeah, there's, there are three, the three alternates that have been sitting as alternates will likely get appointed, or could be recommended to be appointed as permanent members. And they've been watching the process over. Others are, provided they want to continue, and they do, will be four-seasoned members.
So they would not be sworn in until November, so...
I could swear them in.
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking to kick that back to December, then January or February on the land plan adoption. And whether you do both that and the UDO to them in December, I don't see a problem with that.
They wouldn't be city members until November, no matter when you swear them in.
Right, and they're going to have enough to get up to speed on anyway.
What's it, your majority is going to be sitting, currently sitting members?
We could do, we're trying not to put a new member in abid so that they're dealing from a point of ignorance.
I'm still saying you don't want to, obviously, you don't want to buy them the planning, the land use plan and the UDO at the same meeting.
So lots are wiped off.
I think it's going to be a lot to wipe off anyway. So I don't know. I mean, I would think kick it back to, for the planning board, maybe December and January. That way you can give them time to come back to us in January and February. But that's just a thought.
So basically, move them back in time.
And would you all like to see them staggered as well? I guess if they're going to make a recommendation, we'd bring it to you that next.
Might as well. I mean, that's my thought. I'm happy with it, no? What have y'all thought?
I'm happy with the pleasure of the board, Eric.
Well, if the planning board's going to stagger them, I think we'll just bring that recommendation. Like, if they approve, if they make a recommendation to, for you all to adopt the land use plan, we'd bring it to you that next meeting. And then, at a point where they're comfortable with the UDO, we'd do the same.
I don't know, it sounds reasonable to me.
Whatever the pleasure of the board.
Yeah. Kevin, you've been involved in that planning process?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
I'm a total fine.
I mean, what if somebody pops up and then, is our current, is our current UDO going to conflict with the land use plan?
Well, that's one reason why we, oh, adopting the land use plan.
If we adopt the land use plan and somebody shows up...
I hear, I know what you're saying. Since we adopt the land use plan, if our ordinance does not yet follow the legislature...
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing. Somebody magically pops up in December and says, I want to do this. Then we've got a land use plan in May, may, conflict with our old UDO. I used the term old, old UDO.
The law, what the law says is that a, once you have adopted a land use plan, you will be charged with revising your UDO.
Okay, so if we have one, it's going to, it's going to be back to one.
It just won't be 10 years, like some of them.
Yeah, usually you adopt your land use plan, and then like two years later, just filing a new UDO. This is awesome, actually. I mean, this process is way better.
Are there any statutory requirements for when we have these done?
First of July is when we have to have all of the new 160G revisions incorporated, the new...
So the timetable we're talking about is well within that?
It was January, now it's July.
Okay, well, that's what I was concerned about.
Yeah, it's first of July. And we are engaged in a legal review with VTRC just for that, just for the compliance with the law. We have our own legal review after that, but they're looking at it just for the rule of compliance with 160G. It's important enough, and enough is enough detail to make sure we've got it right.
As we look at these zoning changes and other plans, I think the question was asked if we coordinated those with the other municipalities? Is that what the question was?
I'm sorry, yes, ma'am. I thought you asked Mary. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Well, maybe I didn't hear it right. But are we coordinating these to where, like the zoning ordinances and such will be meshed better with the municipalities as well? As people are looking at those border areas around the cities and towns, to where they won't be so confusing?
And that's, well, the ETJ does that on its own.
Right.
Of course, it transitions from, but yes, we held a, under the previous contract, we held a meeting, a planning summit with all of the other municipalities to find out what their intent was, and we are following what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad to meet with any of them as well, if you think that is a benefit. But right now, most of them control an ETJ that's outside of the municipality, where they actually can have their own zoning controls. And outside of that, you all mostly have the RA zoning district, which is there. So I think if anyone wanted to do any development of any significance, they would probably annex into the municipality. Otherwise, they would either, you know, meet the RA requirements or come in here for a rezoning. So it's, I think everything's good on that front. Okay, regarding the land use plan link that I sent you all, are there any questions regarding that? Would, do you all want me to pull it up here on the computer and kind of walk through it? Just so you all understand how it's organized, some of the details that are in there? If not, that's fine, too. And I think with that, we could, that's all I have. But if you'd like for me to walk through that, I could.
Gentlemen, your preference. We've got an hour and a half before our next meeting, so...
I have a question that I'm, that we're going to take away and study a little bit more, are, especially for fringe development around existing neighborhoods, is that lot, new lot density adequate? Is the minor definition of minor subdivision adequate? You know, I had mentioned you could also dictate a minimum lot size as well as density for certain housing types. But I really think that the property next to the existing developed neighborhood, if they're three- or five-acre property, they'll be three or five home loans. And they're not likely to be, you might have a half-acre lot and an acre lot, but they're not, they're not going to, it won't be an impact. We talked about whether the minimum or maximum number of lots in a minor subdivision versus major. We're sort of waffling between three and five.
Or ten.
Ten, ten. I also, and I don't want to say this because it's a bad word, the difference between public and private roads. If we get too large a number of a minor subdivision, it could, it won't match up with that road standards.
Well, I think developers have got the picture, they got to meet the state standard. And that drives a lot of them in their development design.
Right.
And the timeline for the sixth lot out, or the fourth lot out, wherever it is, when I say if our minor subdivision is defined as five, then there's a timeline for that fifth lot. Right now, it's once every year, and it's three years because that's actually how it just, that's how it, you meant that we wrote. But, so we have to, that's something we want to think back to the committee. And encouraging cluster development beyond, cluster development will be encouraged naturally around environmentally sensitive areas. So if the concern with cluster development is environmentally sound development, then we ensure that we promote it, building in the floodplains and the stream buffers and so forth. If the concern with cluster development is more about dictating open space, it's a very different...
Well, it's a variety of things. It's recreational, probably. Well, it's, it's variety of things. It's recreational probably more than environmental, but both are sometimes mutually supportive of each other.
Right. And we can also do that where we allow recreation in the environment.
Sure.
What, the technical review committee, as far as the members on that committee, do we have too many people? Do we have the right groups represented? And-
I, I think, I think that we have several different people representing emergency response. And we should talk about how that gets better represented. We have two separate slots there right now. We have, a lot of those members are ex officio.
How about this? We, we asked you to take a look at that list that then-
You don't come back with a reference.
Come back with a reference.
And the other part of that is the appeals, since we're steering more things to the technical review committee, and then having all of those appeals go to the board of adjustments. And in the past, they have been, I guess you could say distracted in, in certain types of meetings. Are there things that we'd be better off being appealed to the commissioners instead of the board of adjustments?
I was, I was, where's the attorney?
I think statute says that the board of adjustment appeals have to go to the city office.
Well, I'm talking about technical review committee appeals.
TRC.
Go to TRC to y'all instead of the board of adjustment.
Right.
Perhaps some. May, maybe, maybe all, maybe some. Are there some things that would be better off coming to us?
If we came in under one, six.
We need to go to the board.
Yeah.
If we came in under one, four.
Right. Yeah.
If we came in under one, five.
Yeah. If you appeal the technical review committee, it's similar to appealing your planning director. There's interpretation. Because all that, the technical review committee should just be looking at things in a subjective way. Like, did you meet the road standards? Is your lots is, is this like, so, I'm not sure. Could you appeal to the commissioners?
They're basically a decision of the planning administrator.
Well, and if, if the appeal is concentrated on whatever that decision is, since more things would go to the technical review committee, and the, the issue could be concentrated so that folks are not distracted, then that'd be great.
I don't know how that works out.
The additional things that are listed here, so you're talking about the site plan, the commercial site plan review?
Well, even RA, even the major subdivision.
Because they already go, major subdivisions already go to TRC, RA or RP. I have a draft of that. So this, major subdivisions already go there.
Okay. I don't know about great minds, but attorneys' minds tend to think alike.
I mean, I was going to mention that right now, we don't have a particular requirement for commercial site plans to go to TRC. And we need to-
Here's, here's the other question that comes to mind. We've got some things, trying to, as far as my notes, applications for approval of subdivision plots. If, I just want to make sure we've got enough folks in the office, one, to sign those plots, and two, if we're putting more on office staff, do we have enough personnel in that department to administer the plan as presented now? Or perhaps, once we do get a final product and adopt it, I think we definitely need to see if we've got enough personnel there to carry the plan out. If more things are going there as opposed to coming here for final decisions, because they're going to have, well, with the final say, I would think probably as much if not more time involved with the customer.
And if, if our planned unit building conditional zoning is successful, we'll have a lot more plan review.
Yes. Yeah, and that's what I mean. That's-
We'll say plan before the, you know, if we don't, we don't have now.
So we may have to just look at that as far as personnel standpoint.
Hopefully, you'll have less work as it relates to the RA major subdivisions. They're, they're going to get processed faster and be less paperwork. But because of the growth, the water sewer infrastructure and the target growth area you all have, that's going to bring probably an equivalent times two workload for sure.
Do you know if I can give you the numbers? Do you know where, about that we've been talking about?
And that'll be a lot more complex development, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So feeling TRC, you know, about that?
Well, what, whatever is out of TRC, if we're putting more into the TRC, see if there's some way to, are there options? There may not be, but are there options?
Okay, Eric, sounds like you, you finished the initial chunk. And I believe the consensus, having spoken here, is we're going to wait to publicly consider the UDO that you were discussing about. And I believe you have some guidelines here on the timeframe. And these are goals. The, the main thing is to get it right or as close to, we won't get it perfect, but as close to right as we can get it as we proceed. Commissioners, are there other questions you have for Eric at this time?
No, I'll just make one statement, and that is in line with what you just said. As we adopt a new land use plan and UDO, we just need to be mindful that we may have to make adjustments to that plan as things come up. Because anytime you adopt a new document, you learn as you go along. So there may have to be adjustments to it in the, in the future. Can't plan for everything.
Are you really reiterating the timeline that you were, what you meant, to clear?
We basically added a month to everything that he presented.
Okay.
And we, and we left it segmented. We will, we can readdress whether we, we, the commissioners, look at both those items at the same time. But we'll know more as you guys progress. Are there other questions from the commissioners, other comments from the commissioners? If not, it remains to thank you, Eric, for being conscientious. I know you're ahead of schedule and somewhat surprising. And to thank, well, if you remember, Mr. Berger and I sat in on one of your early, I sat in on one really, really early, and then both of us sat in. And it seemed like an intimidating task as you begin to put theory to plots and plots. And I think it remains for us to thank the committee for all they've already done, for their continued efforts on our behalf. Do you have any final words?
No.
Commissioners, final words?
Thank you.
No, I, I agree. I echo, we appreciate the committee and staff working on this to get this done. So thank you, folks.
It's at that point of the meeting where I love to hear the words "I move to."
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Motion made. Second discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Thank you all once again.